Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call our meeting to order. It's six oh five. This is the meeting for our Alachua County Citizens Climate Advisory Committee. So a meeting for January the twenty-third, scheduled for six to eight. Uh, at the Grace Knight, Knight Conference Center Room. Steve, will you, uh, give us our attendance and, uh, let us know if we have a forum?
Sure, um, we've got, uh, Carly Moore, Nathan Fox, Jackie, James Fulton, John, Nick, Amy, Kajara, and Jeffrey. The only people we're missing is Terry and Adam. And Adam was supposed to be on Zoom, he's not coming yet. Oh, there he is, right on cue. So we have a forum, we have seven. Steve, so we are good for that.
Great, we, we can then now approve our agenda. I ask for a motion in court, please. Then move to the second. Second. Alright, uh, everybody let's vote on it. Everybody that wants to approve the agenda, uh, give their hand. Okay, any, uh, again? Any additions? Alright, agenda is approved.
Could you have a question, Susan, I'm sorry, I'm just understanding this now. Uh, we did talk about, I'm very flinging having, um, Eric and someone who represents, you know, one area. But I don't think it's, um, suggested.
We, we did talk, talk about that.
When we get, when we get to that, item number seven, we can talk about.
Okay.
I may have just missed that, or I was thinking it was going to be more. Either way.
On the, on the minutes.
When we, when we get to that, we'll talk about it. I had had contact with Eric and with Terry.
Alright, thank you. Let's, uh, go down to the, uh, review of our, uh, minutes for December the nineteenth. Uh, again, I offer for a motion of approval of these minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Uh, thank, thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? If hearing none, I offer for a vote, all in favor? Any again? Tensions? Alright, we've, able to, we see we can get these things out now, we're in person. We got our December nineteenth minutes approved also. Alright, the next item on our agenda is the assignment of tasks and responsibilities, uh, for our individual members, uh, based on the goal and the, uh, partnership. So, I'm going to pass out, these were our goals that we, uh, had talked about along with our accomplishments. These were the items that, uh, I actually presented to our commissioners, our, our county commissioners. On the back are the goals. And Steve has made for us also copies of the, and he sent these out earlier, deeper copies of the groups, community groups. Second item again. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of review our goals from here. And, and, and the idea may be that there might be some special areas in these goals that you might want to take on. So, as we look at our goals, one was to establish relationships and identify these community groups. Kind of, we're, we're, we're already identifying. And what we want to do today is if there's any special groups that you are either affiliated with or would like to, uh, correspond with, uh, we, let's identify those. And the next item is, uh, in our goal is to, um, did, did you get?
You have an extra copy done?
So, the next item is to, is to use the platform to communicate activities. So, we've kind of been talking about the platforms, and we've, we've had a chance to, you know, look at some platforms. I would like, if we could maybe list some of the things that we're doing here that when we move to a platform, it would be just a matter of putting our activities there. So, what I would like to do is to have, um, someone from our group be responsible for documenting. Steve is, Steve will be always the, the person, but somebody who will work with Steve, make sure that we're documenting our accomplishments, what we're doing. So that when we get the platform, it's just will be a matter of transferring our information. So, is there anyone that would like to? Okay, great. So, the, the next goal, um, is, and, and I'd like to make this into a, a, an action item by saying, someone to develop a community engagement data collection system. So that, when we report, my idea is this, when we report back what, what our community group is doing, we'll have a common way of reporting back. So maybe a data collection or a, or a feedback sheet, uh, that we can give to everyone, so that when we talk, when we do a report on our community group, we can do it in a systematic way that can be put onto our platform. Okay, great, great.
Can I ask a question? So, would this, would then Danielle be the representative, if we just adopt the platform or the, uh, thing that, from the presentation, it sounded like that would happen?
And if you want, and she wants to do, what I was thinking right now, it would be a way for her, she would develop a, a database, us to put our community actions, report from. And, and then it'll be a way we can go ahead and get the general platform, internet.
And, and when you say community, you mean our engagement? That's different than like the, um, talk to, uh, city.
Alright, that, that's great. So, the, the next thing.
Just, John, I, I went ahead and put up the goals, I know Adam was probably wondering what, what goals we were talking about. So, um, Adam, they're shared up on the screen, hopefully you can see them now. Um, if you need me to blow it up, let me know.
No, it's gonna be great, thank you.
So, the next goal that I'm gonna look at was develop a plan, um, that allows, um, CCAC to regularly and conduct engagement with the community. Okay, so, that would be what we just talked about, okay? So the next one, work with staff in, in the city and the county with a greenhouse gas emission inventory. Uh, one of the re, one of the presentations that we have had in the past was a greenhouse gas emission inventory for our area. Uh, you might want to do that again. We have to save video. That, what that did is it told us where our greenhouse gas is coming from, that kind of thing. And, and what I was thinking, I would like to have a person that kind of followed up on.
There, there were action items about next steps, about now that we know, greenhouse gas emissions are, where they're coming from, what do we need to do next? Kind of focus on here, what are the strategies? We use, you know, emissions, vehicle use by commuting? Or what do we do in our buildings to reduce the energy? Those kinds of things, to follow up to that. The, the report actually laid out some of those, so it gives you guidance?
It was, it was very good, it, it kind of told us what sector we were getting most of our greenhouse gas.
And my suggestion would be these sort of county side of things, probably Betsy, she's on. Um, she'd probably be the contact person to help with that, and then other someone, the city guys that she would work with.
Anybody interested in kind of seeing the thought for that?
Does that work large enough for your team?
Well, well, as a committee person, you would be the committee person, and you would follow up with, uh,
Yeah, I'd be happy to be the one, if, um, I couldn't tell if someone already volunteered.
So, Adam, you'd like to do it?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, great, thank you. Then we had, uh, our vulnerability analysis, uh, you know, we did, we did that, uh, survey. And we're now at the point of analyzing that data. And I'd like someone from the committee just to kind of follow up and, and see, and give a report back to us, how that's going to.
With Jane Piven?
Yeah.
So we would meet with the, that's all.
My, my suggestion would be to probably go through me and staff. You would give me the reports and people? And I just got in the survey, um, results back. It's, that's huge. So this, what my suggestion, John, would be is that we find out which reports come back and possibly have different staff, you know, different members, we do different aspects. So, there's a tax, a cultural component, that might interest you, John, but there's a survey, it's going through the, if we do any public surveys and the results from that, that's a whole different one. We'll be getting a bunch of different reports back from that. So, what, what, what I might suggest is that as important as it's available, we then,
So where are we now with that? Is it Ag, the Ag?
The Ag one is the first we've gotten. We are looking at the draft, we'll send the draft back, and then they'll send it back. So, once we get it back, that would be the first, that's probably.
I'll, I'll do that, but al- also the, looking at the data that came back from the, the survey, how, how the data.
I haven't looked at it yet, I just got over the pitch. I don't know, I have to figure out whether we do.
I don't know.
I have a question. But I knew, didn't want to volunteer to do that, but wouldn't send that report to each other?
You will all get these reports as they come available.
That was my question, thank you.
But my thought would be that one person is going to be laid back. I would like it will take up our entire meeting's time, and so we do it. And we'll probably still have a lot of discussions. The survey was done early, well, end of last year, it was an outreach effort to see what the community, people in the community had concerns with. So, what, you know, kind of prioritizing their biggest concerns, flooding, you know, heat, uh, big storms and hurricanes, you know, a lot of it had questions like that. What, what is, what are you most concerned? Is, is, they're down to where they were? You know, who they were, their, their economics a little bit?
We wanted to know where the data was coming from. And, and also, it was a little bit about how satisfied they were with, with, with the situation. I will, I will, yeah. So, that's the vulnerability, um, analysis that we're, we're looking at. The other thing that I wanted to get someone to look at was the climate summit that we were talking about. I'd like someone to work with me to, to, to that, that goal.
I would be happy to, we have met. And I don't know, I should talk about an hour later, but, um, Steve and Betsy have three events planned, and then the, um, Indian Licensee, ECJP Committee has a separate deployment event. But there's a lot of overlap, and there will be a lot. I'm happy to stay.
Okay, great. I was thinking also, we're kind of responsible for keeping our, our joint committee and ourselves up to date with any current information. So, we could have someone that was kind of looking at if there's something new information that came out that they'd like to make sure that we got, and they've sent it to Steve and, and get assimilated, in terms of climate change.
Anything that you think is relevant, and, and new stuff.
They ain't bad. Well, if we brought all I could bring, bring it all to him, and then he can learn.
Again, go through me and him. You can't email him.
No, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, just send it to me and all, Dave, you can expect it. No, our, the, um, yeah, what I need to do is get you guys permission to add to our, our big, um, you know, we have the site now that has. You'll be surprised, there's already a lot there.
And, and, and you know what we might do that would help, is put it into like a group, different areas. Another item I actually talked about. Saying, and we actually did this, uh, we, and, and maybe Steve, you can pull it. We set priorities for high-risk impact areas. And, uh, we, we, we talked about, uh, and setting that priority, uh, those priorities. Now, one of the things that really stood out was inviting clean air. And that was from the, the smoke and virus, uh, that people were concerned about. And then we had flooding, and then we had hurricane. So we, we set some priorities for, for our area, what was most important. So, we had that in one of our notes, so if we could get someone to look at that again, and let's bring it back to this group, and, and let's get a chance to, uh, to set some priorities going on high impact.
So, are you talking about creating an action plan for the city and county?
Well, we, we, they have an emergency. And, and we actually had a presentation from them, and maybe that might be something, um, I fooled it. It was like, you're in fifty some pages, but, uh, but, but, you know, they, they came in and they did a presentation from how they handled the emergency. But what we did is, we came up with what we thought might be high-impact, and we gave a priority based on, I think we based that on.
A combination. More likely to happen sooner, and you had a prioritization of when things would be getting there.
And, and then, do we need to wait for the results of the journey? I mean, to me, it seems like the obvious problems are going to be flooding, um, climate, extreme climate, migration. And migration will affect water, and, um, so.
But let's see, I, I want to see what we, but we actually, we'll start with what we came up with, and then we, at this group, can look at, see what we think. Uh, one of the things that really came out, Zach, was indoor air quality. And, uh, I didn't think it would come out that quick, but what it is, it doesn't assert a lot, but we have a lot of particulates. And, and then smoke was things that, uh, that, that got a high rating based on the ways that we, that.
So is this, we're going to prioritize, is patients or?
First of all, we had a couple of, uh, then some actions that we, that, that's the reason we looked at even since we, what we did was do already, we kind of, that's why we had that. Tell us, what do you do?
So.
What, what else?
Steven's telling me that, he's gonna be.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to.
Is the microphone out? I cannot hear.
Oh, yeah. Uh, anyway, so like, we have to find the intersection.
What I was asking for now, just deciding that we want to kind of, the, uh, your head, making sure that that. So, even if you're gonna send out things that, that, and then, and bring it to the group.
And then, perhaps, if this would be okay, if we see something missing from that list, we could remount Stephen, who could be on this.
I have a question, going back to, um, to the, the Joe Data website. Um, to be able to.
We, so the, the committee itself does it, the department, um, both Betsy and I, for sustainability, office, and the environment, have budgets.
I have ideas. Um, I can build a website, and listing board is about a couple of months.
And the only thing is, how would that be different than, like?
Coggle?
Coggle would be.
Coggle is like a dashboard, we could have a Coggle page now, but. And, when you have a website, you can also build a social media stuff too. I did it for myself, I have a social website.
You know, I, that's a part of the discussion that I see about having a website outside of the county and city. It might actually provide some usefulness to lead the county and city's website to a different website that perhaps some, some resonations.
Oh, I was just reading here. I'm just reading here, it says maybe a listed website or other, like a website.
It wasn't.
Yeah, what I, what I was thinking, we would have something just for our group.
Okay.
And, and then it would, we could transfer that information when we got the platform. But what I was thinking is, it would be a good way in which we could collect all of our information and stuff. So, I was thinking that, that would be particularly to what we would get back from the community.
It, it could be information stuff, or what it can't be is community.
Absolutely.
And we can't mention that.
Right.
Okay.
It would be a way to collect.
A Google Doc would be that.
Okay, yeah. So, so we would, we, we could give us a way to collect the information, of what to collect, and, and about our community groups, and then we would send that to you, and then we just talk about it.
Are, I was like, Danielle, Danny?
Danny, please.
Danny. I was like, you know, you're offering to create a website towards these classes, put out the activities, size of the public.
I mean, it's not gonna be like a, a cool, yeah.
It's just a very basic way for others.
Yeah.
Prior.
And then we could put some media pages that are added. But we're doing this, you don't worry.
Did you look through the updating?
Yeah.
I mean, I see that as the. Internal.
It, it, it is, yeah, that, I wasn't headed there.
See, we're recording what we got from the community, but, I mean, Steve.
Yeah, I, I don't quite have my, I don't have all that you're. So, obviously, to make sure it could be legally, we can put. Interactions going on.
Right.
On that page. The location that, you know, things are getting placed on there for attention information, or climate information in general, you know, that's something that is probably fine.
Yeah.
Well, and I was interested in, we've seen the, the, the back page, the VR, because we need that second part of the. We, then, kind of the invite to the public.
Yeah, if you go there now, and just say, here's the agenda, here's the, yeah, yeah. It will accept that.
Put a link there.
Yeah, yeah, I'm probably about, I just want to make sure that our communication's up.
Sorry, it was just an idea, I was like, oh, no.
And that might be a patient with a vision that, you know.
But. But I also would like for you to put a system together for data collection.
Um, yeah, I already have ideas.
Okay, great, great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, the other item that I wanted to get a liaison for, someone to, uh, keep us abreast of what we're trying to do that is. Uh, just, they had a meeting, they were working. I, I, I guess I could do it.
Sure, I could, I'm friends with Roberta.
Okay, yeah, Roberta's there, okay, great, Jeff.
Ma'am, I'll just ask her. Utilities, it's actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And lastly, one of the things that we talked about in previous years was having a, remember our product is supposed to be, uh, a plan that we submit, uh, to the joint committee. So, we were, uh, working on a format for that. But how do we fill that in, what, what should that be? And, and we had worked on an outline, and that, I think that's about four. And, and we had worked on an outline and that, I think that's about towards where we're at.
Yeah, and that, I just wanna make it clear too, you guys are not writing plans. You know, we're not expecting volunteers, you guys have enough on your face to do a lot of information, you guys. The expectation is to not, we not to write a plan, but to, to possibly help us gather the information we.
Right.
Just staff or, and any consulting that we get, the public, the staff. Staff would be here.
They should do the regular plan.
Yeah, you, you guys are not expecting.
You know, and, and part of that is other things, priorities, part of it is.
Right, so you're kind of providing some of the tools and guidance and materials, collaboration that helping staff put together.
And when.
The, no, the summit is to kick off, I, I'm using the summit to kick off the action, the climate action plan. Requires the support of all those stakeholders, policymakers, city, the county, and the small. So, I would use the event of, of the climate event that will come in up this, during the summer, kick off, push for the development. General, data publicly, would be to have it done in a year from now.
I mean, we have, well, all right, let me read one. According to the Paris, the, you know, halfway to our goal by twenty thirty, which means in the next seven years, if we want to reduce our, our increase in renewables, we have to reduce like seven, seventy-seven percent in years over the next seven. So if we're gonna take a whole year just to talk about it, we're down six years.
Well.
It's gonna be more than seven. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but if you, this is to the final approval of plans, so you start backing, backtrack that to a draft, your evaluation, presentations to committee members. Not this many, but commission members, um, collaboration of these ideas to the small cities, it, that's a year.
They only, once a month.
Yeah, there's a lot of, and there's community engagement component, how does the community feel about these action items? Oh, we, and we gotta get that input from them too.
But I hear. I mean, personally, I'm talking to a lot of climate activists and they're like. You know.
That's what I. And there's a reason there. Where, I think that's where the community engagement, to, to, like, which, the, 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 the word of evidence, meaning, like, this and that. Yeah, we, we've had a lot of conversations about how do we, to, you know, put plans that not only action the goal, but is, so it actually works together. Like, for, for, to, you know, elevate, you know, and increase the scale of the impact of the, of the policies.
John, I don't, I don't mean to interject, but there are, I, there are things that could happen way before the plan is adopted. You know, on its own, definitely, whatever there's an opportunity to move something forward, it should be moved. We, we're, we're gonna probably get a certification from a government, out some items related to, you know, the zero waste strategy, or waste of energy issues in public, we have those, I think our salt waste department could be, so that could lead to an action. So I'm not saying not hold back on any action, if we're ready to bring anything forward, we do that. But the climate action plan is very large, very, there will be aspects, probably within two to three years, that are. That is, good, but, so I'm not saying hold back on anything, you know, anything now that seems happy.
Right, when it seems like as soon as we get the call, it's, it's.
There will be things, probably the greatest example of that, but, yeah, that's something, if we go with them, the small, that would help us see what action. No, we could be filling that in and getting that, created, getting the public into our new guidance. And then, see, if I just did a formal, create something, really, that would be like a tool for guidance, for a public business plan, for the city and county for the. Yeah, that would be getting updated, probably, yes, a disaster.
And the plan will encompass things that already. This is, but we can't, we can't stop doing it till we get the plan, but it'll, it'll encompass, the plan will kind of, I envision it, it brings all the actions together, common movement. And, 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 and it's not just, like, you know, we'll have things already going, we'll put in the plan. These are things that we're doing already and part of this, and here's the umbrella that it's under.
It was, um, there's a recorded webinar, three years ago now, that I'll share again, I've shared it back, you know, but it's, um, settlement representing the city and our, they put their, uh, other three months, and use policies for, for the, it is what April. I don't know if it was, I'm, you know, all these pieces had to come together for, but, but a one hour webinar. And then, do you remember seeing that? And it was really powerful, because they told their story and they're like, we're, and they just, they seen as, you know, people contest and move forward.
Let's do it three months.
You go.
I mean, it could serve as a distraction, people reach our phone sooner, but anyway, I'll, I'll share that, I wanna watch it again.
Yeah, if you could, if you could, that is, to me, yeah. Or tell me what the meaning.
Often it's Jewish.
So, that was what I came up with from our, uh, goals. Um, so, it, it, as you read through the goals, uh, we're gonna work with staff to interpret the city and the county, we now have gas and talked about that. Work with staff to interpret the results of the, uh, vulnerability study, uh, we're gonna help coordinate the climate summit. We're going to, uh, following the community input, uh, from the summit, we're gonna work with the staff to draft the action items. That's gonna be part of the plan. And lastly, uh, again, remain active and look for, uh, and identify all the issues that come up during the, and. Yep, and we're gonna. Right, so, the next thing that we need to do is look at some of the, oh, I'm sorry.
He said current events and I was thinking about, uh, the Inflation Reduction Act and how little, you know, about what specific, like, what programs they have for branding.
I have a handbook, I don't know who sent it to me. I have a handbook from the government, it's on your knees, but it's good, I'm reading it, it's not bad. I mean, it's, like, the pages might just be like a, an app on it.
Oh.
So, I'll send this to Steven, just send it every, I have a copy of the IRA handbook.
It does, it's like an extra. Okay.
Yeah, did you send it to me? Like, I don't.
Maybe if you gave it in the back, yeah.
It's quite so important for you to get that information and you do it. But, uh, but yeah, I think I'm coming.
Oh, then.
Yeah, I think I saw that too, it was, it was, it, it had us, uh, in the empowerment, it, it, he was looking. Where, where it ran. And one of our.
I printed it out and I read it when I came.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, it's in there. All right, so what I'd like to do now is, I mean, maybe we can probably have already, but take a look at these community groups, and if there are any ones that stand out. You don't have to, in a Facebook, all of them, but, uh, some that stand out, I'd like to be a part of. Yeah, I, I have.
So, it is people talking, so.
And, and that's another thing we could do, is look at things that.
Yeah, I have, I have a team that, that I've been involved with already, but I'm not sure all of them.
Shouldn't just put on listening, all right, who wants to.
How do you wanna do that? Okay.
Or, or would you rather?
We totally can't support, I just wanted to. Um, so when we reach out to these groups, what exactly, I think, what do you just, just do?
Hey, I'm here for the, for, we need to talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like we could talk about, um, summit, and, and June, like, put, I mean, that's.
Yeah. They're doing, re- remember what these groups are.
Right.
Uh, these groups are groups interested in climate change issues. So these are groups that probably already have things going on, that's a two-way thing, you're, you're reporting what they're doing, and then you're letting them know what we're doing. And, and finding out how we can work together. And then Danny's gonna, uh, put together a way to capture that information.
Yeah. Then perhaps I can.
What about UAB?
I, I, well, you know, I thought about that. I think that we're a government.
Very well.
Yeah, yeah, so, let's, let's don't put them on the community, let's put it on. All right, um, so back to, let's, we, we're busy getting into. Find out what they're doing and then let them know what we're doing. And reason they're on this is because they're doing things all day. All right, I will, um. Okay, let's, let's go around. Sorry, yeah, look at mine, I, I, um. I, I'm, I'm, I'm working with the, uh, a lot to make, uh, compensate for just groups, so, um, I'll, I'll. And, um, and then, um, of course, I, I cheer, um, keep a lot to make them do. So I'll, I'll keep that, that group, um, and, um, hold on. Um. So Jackie, both you and I work with, uh, N double A.
No, I talk to the employees and I'm not allowed to, we can't vote through it, so I just, I, I am. Only in front of this one, and I will be working with them, but not.
If it would be official.
Okay.
That would be.
Okay. All right, so I'll stop, right, so I'll, I'll just do this, this.
Maybe that's the best approach right now, it's just go around and identify what you definitely wanna be part of, that way, I don't wanna, there's too much not on it. I need anything that anyone.
I'm gonna go around and look, or if.
Yeah.
Yeah. Personally, it's very, it's in the.
Um. Um, I guess, we, others have any, um, connection with the climate. Florida wild, wild life, no, I'm thinking of the, sort of wild coordination. It's coordinated, yeah, F M T. And, oh, I'm the nature. So, but I can go, I had to say three, to be, to be better. The, um, maybe, and see that. How impressive is that?
Got you down from four. And.
Yeah, sure, and you.
And, yeah. We, the. You can, she's on her, she's at the, that were.
So I noticed that there's both an Olatul All About Society and a Florida All About Society, and I would recommend that you just do, and I'll do that. And I'll do, um, Climate Reality Project, and, and, um, Europe. Use the cheap creations there. Women's. And, um.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm.
Look, let me, um, do one more of this, I, look, zero rate in.
Well, I would like to add on, Rob, and, this is currently not taking over the place, uh, in the mental, but trying to, uh, help it. So that will be that as well. Um, I have no connection to the Albert Climate Action, I, I, I don't really, know much, but.
Who needs a line, uh?
In a, yeah, me too.
You know, since you're in the, yeah, shit.
Yeah, one of them.
No, I'm sure, uh, I, I know who, who we are. We, uh, I don't understand.
Yeah, sustainable, it's, oh, today, uh, um.
That's my husband.
Oh, absolutely, not me.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I mean, he knows the, they all know.
Cool, that's fine, we can, we can.
Well, tell me that.
Okay, anyway, you do, you have a horse racing. The name is horse racing?
Sounds important.
That's crazy.
Everywhere we talk. I'm admitting.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Neither, why don't you find and take the autobahn?
Oh, I couldn't.
Well, it's fine, I have a bunch of.
Okay. Oh, I know somebody on US measuring plan, Barry.
I can't talk.
Oh, yeah. I'll be so. I'll be so darned.
Yeah, Perry mentioned a few at U S. There's sunrise on.
It is.
Okay, um, I don't really know. But I, I wouldn't mind doing the climate life lobby. Um, and if it's not inappropriate, the, uh, Lottway, Tommy and the Blake. Oh, you got it? I didn't hear you say it, I'm sorry. Uh, the. Uh, Florida Conservation Voters. Uh, and then I'd also like to do the Florida Wildlife Federation, I actually might need to go there, which is there, and then the Florida. Um, either anyone else, you know, the Energy Network, the same, or the, you do, Florida, and they would be.
Yeah.
From, um, Edel. No.
It could be the same.
I'm, I want to. Same. Same group, I have a, a net.
Probably needs a private.
Yeah.
I'm Joe Bailey. Really big English, pretty. Pretty natural, the largest.
Make fun of that one.
I think you're gonna find somebody that are kind of a larger group that may not have a section watching them. They might, and I think they would, would love to. Hiding, Florida, Eric mentioned, maybe would be, a group, one thing you might wanna ask, do you do, educational tables?
I'm, I'm also on board for Kent Hospital, and I would like, we're building a lot of stuff here, and I think it'll be a great.
So the ones that don't get somebody picked for our readers, and keep going through, are they all picked, or are you gonna ignore them?
I'm, I'm, all of them. They, they might come up to, you know, things that we're doing.
You know what, Danny's making a, yeah.
Yeah, I'll respect it, uh, at least it's for sheep. Um, let me get to it.
Did someone say the?
And, and I'd like to propose this, uh, cover that, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer in common communication. So Steve, if, if you could work a letter for us that we could send out to the group, what we want. And then the same message. Then we got common data collection. So, same thing.
What, what is the number of areas?
The number of areas. Groups that does movies here. Yeah, movies that have to do with any kind of.
That one's for me, that one's funny.
Yeah, very, very cool, yeah, those.
Okay.
Show on that. With the drone.
Boy, Danny.
I did, yeah. That's, yeah.
You don't get them.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did, did someone say climate talking? Part of the Latin. If you don't want it, I would do that. Something to do with. I'll do the interface. I think we get the, interface?
Oh, interface.
It's Alan. Is it Ellen? She. Oh.
Oh, it's two.
We, we are based on my list, we have eighty percent.
App can do that.
And Perry, look, Perry.
There is, there is an organization. That they say. One of the, one service agents. And they work on projects. Where, um, they fund, i- it's just part of the, uh, Department of Agriculture. And, uh, they, they fund projects, and, and we want, let, let me, I work with, I work with them, see what they can do, what they're doing. Measures that they send out to.
See, the new thing that I was saying, was reading the food, or whatever.
Yeah, it may, it may not be the one thing.
Yeah, no.
What was the US extension?
I.
So we were saying?
No, there was a difference.
And maybe you.
Yeah, I know that they have programs.
Oh.
It's been there.
Well, it's on there.
Cindy is in Dari, uh, here. After. And it's in class. He's on the, I know, he's not. Here. But part of the work, as in the last, and, and to me, the. Very.
I, I think it would be.
I, I think I'm, I, I've been.
Or.
Yeah.
I'll send her, I'll send her comments.
Yeah.
For the on, things.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll work on that. I could, I could do the.
I have to carry down some of that?
Oh, good, that's fun, that's actually good.
Yeah, that's, whatever.
Okay, so the way you have it, I could slash. We'll, uh, be. Just funding volume. Fine. I'm. I think we, you, we got at least eighty percent right now. Sounds great, so Steve's gonna redo that list when, when it helps. Alright, moving on down our agenda. Alright, that, the, um. Bad recommendations based on the presentation problem, um. Okay, so let's do it this way. Um, I'm gonna open it up to discussion, and comment about the presentation, and then, um, we can. Do, do we need to vote on that? If we want to provide a formal statement to the city and the county about using hospitals and using those. Let's discuss it first, um. Overall, I thought the presentation was, was very good, I thought, what I liked about it is the fact that they answered questions. Because the question taught at home how it might fit into our system. I was very pleased with Steve's, that the county, the city, had a technical issue there. Because we can talk about what it does, but if it doesn't fit into the current situation that we have here, then it won't, it won't really work, uh, fit. And I thought that they felt that it was a fit, uh, into their technical system. So I, I was pleased with it, uh, I, I went on the website, and I looked at what they were doing in other cities. And I liked that, I liked the, the broadness of it, and the ability to adapt to the market situation. I, I speak in favor of it.
I think you said it all, I agree.
I do too, and I, I feel like it really is user-friendly for the citizens, and it makes it, and that's the.
And, and their, their, their theme was taking ideas, moving them to action. That, that is the, the theme for what they, they do, is moving ideas into action. But anyway.
You know, initial, maybe. We are gonna have. The climate city is, before with a climate factor, that's be able to get folks ready for this. Betsy and I would probably tag team this effort personally. The ability to manage the city county, and need to get, I, I make it really comfortable with environmental components, but there's a lot of social, health-related issues that, you know, Betsy and others could be better fit. So, yeah, we, you know, from, from a staffing point, this will drive us to a destination, uh, because it'll make it very clear where those gases are. And you can, I think, we're just, that would be, they're gonna see where they're, they're gonna put pressure, you know, in those gases. G R U probably gonna be a component of that, because the whole energy side of the city, it's gonna be on G R U shoulders, climate, as well, so. Um, I, I think it's gonna push, and make it very clear where the, build in and help the, the issues. It's really hard to explain what we're not doing yet, because you can't see what we're not, you know, it's not visual there. And when you see something that says, you know, healthy, that issues related to heat, and, and there's two things listed, and they were, who's dealing with that? Who's helping that, is it, the center, is it the health department? You know, where, where is that a, you know, target, so it's basically that people need to onboard and be, be called. So I hate to, it's a cart before the horse kind of thing, but it, it sort of pushes forward, get it going.
Forward, it would have, kind of, the budgeting, everything.
Yeah, so the joint board would, the joint board wants to hear from you all, whether you'd like to. Kids, and go back to them, they would have been direct, a decision back to their board, they would have had to been.
And also, presented to them once, also.
Yeah, I was presented.
What? I was at that meeting, and I've seen it twice.
As long as you're comfortable, I don't wanna talk to the egg, and so.
I think that there are other, you can talk from. Or, I'm not like, in this place.
Uh, are they going to get other presentations?
I, I don't know, I don't know how that, that's not here, that.
Oh.
Could be, it could be recognized, they can. It means that this is the only, that, well, the one that's available.
Not any. Open.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Know that it, it's, it's, they can, they can. If we can present this, that's the part, there's probability of them to take on that, that, that. That, the, are those conclusions actually, they're safe, if you can play some stuff to incorporate it, but I like.
Hey, games are really neat there. I think that's the whole, that the platform, it's gonna identify the critical, it'll, it'll think, I believe it'll have the data, some of the, that is available, if you see one, if you.
There.
If you, you'll have the vulnerability, oh, to verify why it's an issue, um, yeah, it'll be, that'll be part of.
Hey. There's the, our community, we can get to. For the.
Which, which way to act, and we could be, and we could be, the data, and we could be.
There's a lot of, think of it as a quadrant, or. We're looking for those opportunities, it's lower efforts. Or I guess like.
The leverage.
My hand is always like this, that I'm visioning, but, yeah, like, something, wouldn't take much effort, that's below hand. Some of those have a really big impact, others, really small impact, so even though it's low hand, you're doing that, after, and some other things, but, you know, maybe, those, holding eggs that are.
How do we get our?
Sound like that's.
It's an official. So.
You need monkey?
So, here, here, just, I'm, I'm gonna call for the discussions, well, I haven't said this. So. Would we like to make a motion to recommend? Although, as a company, or would we like to make a motion to say that we want a kind platform that also, again? Because we're gonna probably have other injuries. We like this platform.
And I agree with you.
Well, wouldn't that be something that those joint forces?
Yeah. Well, wouldn't that be something that the joint board would, you know?
So, they'll decide how they, they handle it, they just wanna know.
They gave us the right, that was a good, to answer that question, I was wondering about that myself. Yeah. Uh.
A you? Which, that would be me.
No, no. Yes, Eric, just from a, a procedural standpoint, if you're going back to the joint. At least the city, at least the county, at least the city have a. Like that, it, it can't just be a social. Just as, I, I, I would, I would, it's a city. Or at least a, an indication. To get responded.
Well, I mean, those are, I'll be maybe summarize for. Right, um. Here is. Here are some other options, I think, for, 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 here's, here's.
So rather than making a, a recommendation for them, maybe we can make, uh, we can, we can draft what we liked about.
I, I kind of like what Nathan said, that we should say, we like this, this is why we like it. And let them decide if they wanna look at three others, which they do. But at least it will have said, this is why we like it. And they can have those factors to look at, and, and they can pick about.
Yeah, it's always a cool thing, because it'll really know.
And to be fair, I agree with you, if this. Questions that want answers, I'll, 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 I don't. It was, right, or say, um, pitch we heard, they are trying to tell, talk to them. Or, or.
So do we, do we wanna give, do we wanna give Steve ideas that, what did we, what did we like about it?
I like the trend.
I like the grandfather.
I like the accommodated. The ease of use.
The map and the staff. And the person, they're about someone.
They, they talked about other things, they were already enough.
And you came with those.
It's, it's been used successfully.
It has a.
It has a touch.
Remembering the daily report.
Okay. Yeah, seems like they really. So it's not. High as nothing.
This, this.
Take that, the information.
出自my. Those were our attendances, right? Got one more?
Did somebody already say like, uh, it seemed to be a lot of questions. It's getting to the fall.
Mm.
That's, that's.
Or support.
Support.
Yeah.
Support.
Alright, wanna switch hats now and say what concerns are? They're not, they're not local.
I know, yeah.
Right now, but, you know, Europe, they got a job when we are, so that's, that's an advantage. But, but, I mean, Europe has seen a very much better job this time, and, you know. So why be in this deal?
No, it's, it's not that, we don't, no, it, it's just that. Oh, this is, so.
Um, and, and I saw him that.
Even though, because of the budget.
Well, me, for, I saw that where the next three, again. I mean, because it was, that was. A lot of progress, the figuring out, and, and they were, I, I remember correctly, they were speaking during the. The opposition, there's some in Europe and all, you know what I mean, it's, and again, this is, this is.
Now, 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 this company isn't really contributing anything. It's all contribution people, using their just creating a platform that's gonna keep that company in that. So I'm not sure that, I'm thinking this, that this is why we're talking time, um, to, to manage things that rights are playing for.
Adam, just, uh, is it seven, seven, three? Any, any other concerns? Uh, we, we thought, another one, we, we thought the pricing was good. And we.
That's the bottom line.
Well, I think the fact that it's open to this is going to be the root of this stuff. Subliminal, but, but the way I understand it, I think, I mean, they're not in this team.
Well, their pricing definitely didn't give us a lot of money, cared of what they were doing.
I thought I mean, um, to, to hold the same track offer, if there is any, or change, or update, or. We just get, sell it, because he was gonna buy it, because he didn't. Not the price, it's not the price that.
And, and I, our, the city and the county asked about that from the security sample. Called that, opposed kind of.
There should be.
Alright, if, uh, so, so what we're doing here, we're, we're not, we're not recommending, we're, we're telling the joint commission what we like about. And this leaves it open for us to look at others, and then compare them on the same basis. That make sense? That, that generally. Alright.
I, I have some concerns of college, I mean, so. When you said that, that made me concerned that we're gonna take a year or two to. So, if we put something in it that says, that we advise the joint board to choose a platform like this in a timely fashion, by the, within the next three.
I, we can put anything down, uh.
Yeah, well, I put it down.
We, we, let's just, let's not give them a, like, feel this is.
Urgent, anytime.
Urgent.
Since when they created this board, said we want, we're inviting old ideas, older, in our life, recognizing.
First, the.
So, so, to underline that. Either the board recommends, should. Other platform.
And the other topic, like adopting a.
And, and, yeah, the important thing is for us to do action. This will allow us to get into planning to an action.
That's that, okay.
Alright. So, if everybody's satisfied, we, we, you know. Wanna take a break, we wanna, you ready to keep going? Alright. Uh.
It, it looks like.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we, we didn't make a recommendation other than we're just giving this. Does everybody feel good about this, sending this information? You wanna make?
Is there, well, yeah, just make sure everyone's.
Yeah, I, I.
Yeah, measure.
Alright. Alright, the next item. That's, uh. App update.
Alright, I'll, I'll jump in and then we'll do the next one. I just, I didn't ask the new joint board, but, but I'll support them. So from the city, are the wardens who have done the project there. We have Byron Eastman and Casey Swillitt are the three, the G R U commissioners. The, um, small city commissioner is still Bishop, uh, Dewey Hutchinson, to be a possible. He's a problem. And then for the county, it's, uh, Anaphrizia, who has the district chair this morning, um, Mary Helen Wheeler and, and Mary. So, and I think it's Mary, so that's the current major. I believe they meet again February. So obviously, you would wanna have this information pass. By that.
It's the only one from the city, or even.
They worked in around, before last year, it was. Hopefully. They, this small city last month. They meet February twenty seventh. That'll be in the morning. They meet in twice, every other month, and they won't meet again in April.
And, and if we want to get on, do they, do they ask for us, or do?
They, they have to ask, this is in the update, and we, this committee has a standing position that you're always welcome to provide an update, so. Unless you don't have an update, we usually have to go on the.
And, and we did do the global update to them, right?
Yes, at the last.
Well, I, I would love to always give an update.
Europe, you're always welcome to give a feedback. There, and, um, obviously, we'll provide them the statements that you all have. If we can actually. It's usually at nine thirty in the morning, nine and nine.
And, uh, the letter that we wrote it on last night, do they already have that?
Yeah. That we're going. The other, um, news, I think there's one other item, Betsy and I have been, we, we're at the June second, for one of our climate events. Um, and it'll take place at, takes us to a. And it'll be a, kind of like a fair type event, where we'll hope to have booths, we have an area where we might give a talk. But the idea there would be hopefully having maybe some organizations come in and give our education, give our climate, and really start to get community, you know, interest in this different area. So we'll hire local vendors, and then involving speakers. June second.
Um, would be okay if I talk about what ECJC is planning? Also, because it's climate summit, ECJC's planning climate summit on May twenty seventh, it's all day. It'll be an all-day event. The key speaker will be Jackie Patterson. She's from the Chisholm Legacy Foundation, which is a climate justice, a national climate justice group. She recently spoke in Egypt, the, and, um. It's, it's, where is she, have they located her? Not yet, um, we wanted to do it at the, but they're busy that day, so we're looking at United Church of Gainswell, but if anyone has any other suggestion, we'd like it to be in. I would think it's.
That's our new, uh, city, uh, that's our new, new Gainswell, San Kelly, right on H, right on H Avenue. The new San Kelly, yeah, that would be great if it's available.
Well, we need a, a big room that would hold each, and then at least four breakout.
Take a look, yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay.
It, it has, move it to the wall. It's, uh, city.
Okay, so I could talk to this. Nathan, you have it?
Okay.
That, that's just the Saturday before Tuesday. So that's good.
And at least one of the presentations we're thinking about is even a gentleman, talking about the home building.
I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad we were looking at these things, uh, I think that would be great. And, uh, also, another option would be building a citizen's building.
In LA?
Breakout.
Yeah, breakout, by the way. And the acoustic.
Let's, let's talk and say it on.
That, that, I don't know. Like, we need transportation.
I'm trying to get everything out. Like, yeah, they really wanted, the people that I've had to talk to, really wanted to love, and it's, it's, not, you know, and it's. No, it's already just a, a, a.
Well, I, I don't know about it, I've seen, uh, and Cornish are already spoke to the person that does the.
Maybe she told, but it was.
But, yeah, well, not well.
I can find out that it's, it's.
It's beautiful, it's such a, but she did already ask someone and they covered it. But if you want any.
If you want, I don't even know, so, yeah. Or just to ask.
It's Saturday, yeah.
All right.
That's, that's all I had to do with county.
Something for the city, but then, um, here's a. Esri Dashboard. Um, the city already has. We'll say though that setting in. Mine, so that's like the second thing to look at. This city already has.
What is it?
Uh, it's Esri Dashboard, um, the city and the sustainable development department already has like three or four that you can use. Uh, E S R I.
It's the company that.
G I F. Yeah. So it's off the city website, it already. Yes. And, um, I've been to Esri, uh, M and R. Conference, it will probably cost more. It's not like same one way or the other, but I think it is very expensive.
So, uh, that, that's the, the county and the city mission is all about?
The city already. But it would be. Does, I'm sure you have to come out and say this, um.
No.
Ward.
Yeah, we have to do all.
They do have. Right, you say that, I need to agree a lot. But if we already have licenses for Esri, then.
That's why I'm like.
Wait, you know, so that second said.
So then. Who the part of call for?
Yeah, our whole time. I don't know. I would say.
Gary?
Sure, um, got a couple of things to update this. Um, so we are, uh, you mentioned. But, energy. Which of those? Also, I didn't. What's a community? A good two or taking. Maybe take the lead in. Which year are you? There are certain things that we cannot focus on. Some group. We don't. Do. I'm gonna say. I've seen a couple of them, the customer, the store, the. We actually. Yeah, I can be putting on that, and you are right, there's a boss. People are still figuring it out, we've had. Writers on the board. That is something that you really like to be working. Um, U A B energy policy. Writing a charter for a D B steering committee. G R U. G J. Part of that steering committee is really. Are you for the. Specialized option or for air. Right. What do you got, a steering committee? Eliminator goals right now. Hybrid and. All right.
Yeah.
We, we're trying to. Ask about it. All right, good. Um, so IRP. Better resource plan, we are kicking off this year. And the other that helped me to do is how we need. Look at it. But we are kicking off. We are tired of. Their primary goal is to. Um, specifically. But we are. We're looking for twenty five of the. The idea is, is. Truth be known in everything. We, we have very hopeful. Party. So we have right now envisioning different groups, um, that are in different areas, uh, environmentally. On that fair above. Justice. Justice. Chamber of Commerce. Tourism, qualified, large customers, education. U A B members. And also, it's easy, like, uh, government. Um, participation, uh, in the county's. Failure. And we're also working on. But whenever they get there, um, as well as the, uh, City of Gainesville, authority, however, the. Global housing. Uh, so having a meeting with the city manager, the captain that's talking about their involvement. But we also have electric housing authority, uh, serialized, faith-based representation, low-income representation, large customer. The idea is to bring all those folks together and give them really. E. Back. Uh, integrated resources. Um, so it answers your question, well, how do you need your people? And. What resources? That include. Management. That include growth. Solar growth that offset that growth. Relation growth and measure. So the idea with the stakeholder advisory group is really bring everyone together and they'll get, uh, in-depth meeting. Um, basically from the beginning to the end. So the person is an IRP one oh one. What is an IR? Does it do? What can we do? They be on strength, how do we build it? Next one may be on schedule or very end outfits. The option that we consider is how do we. Was in, was. The idea is to make sure that, uh, the folks in this group, number one, immune. Two, that they're indicating both ideas. Groups. To this stakeholder group, as well as. Distribute. So, um, one of the groups that we invite three hundred representatives. Representative. Would be. Be. How would you? So that is the worst. Even John has that. Obviously, as far as the stakeholder group goes, it doesn't matter who it is. Anybody on the group, they have to be committed to it. They have to be committed to. The, the, uh, community mission.
We will come to that. Uh, we, we, uh, whatever.
There will be some virtual. Purpose. Important part is that. Because if you miss the IRP one oh one, you need. Should, should get the middle. Maybe. This may be. That's really the. Yes. Right now, we're looking at two hours every other. The idea is that, you know, we buy lunch for folks. Hours or three places in session. Um, your youth staff will be there, uh. The contagion. Saltent will be there, and they'll be walking through. College process, large. So that's not the only outreach. We will have multiple, um, communities. That's. For the public, you may be asking for the ten, three climate summers, just talk to people that are out there. G R U is. Why up there is important. So what will be, the goal is. Just part of that. Well, yes, the. We want folks to give the, you know, steroids. The. Find a nature of any different. Full heads up with coming, plus meeting we expect is probably. Will be dropped in a fire. We are not. To compare to sending out to these different groups and.
Already, uh, we have someone in. So what's they doing?
Our, our consultant will be doing that. So J A is, is in love with the, there's the end of the process right now, in this same consultant that J A is using. Uh, we get a consultant. U S P or Landy, it's very similar process, different consultant, the same idea, um, specifically we're using. So, uh, they'll be facilitating the meeting in the discussion. But G R U will also be there.
The J A.
Exactly.
J A, not. Just to make sure.
Hey. Anything else to it? Um.
Oh, I, I guess two questions. Um, the next one is really to understand the motion that we talked about. What I understand is bringing back options. That what, is what. That possibly varies coming through.
Yeah, it, it, it refers to that presentation.
Oh, that.
Two with. Together. You guys recall?
Yeah, we were, we were talking. That's the, that's the key focus, um, that they, we, we kinda thought that maybe we wanna make sure all the options are being looked at.
Sure.
And that from a different perspective, like Barry would pop options from this perspective, and we could assess those options.
Barry and I have a lot of conversation. And so I'm fully open to that. So if there's any options or anything that you wanna hear more specifically, or we stand. Cause we'll, we'll come back to the options that we have to say, right?
Well, for example, when you did your presentation in November, um, afterwards, I, even with Barry, a little bit about the presentation. And he taught, you know, he was talking a lot about the challenge. And his reply was that many communities outside do have. Thirty-five and, not including. And that, um, that there are many ways that we can do that. And so I felt like we'd like to have both of these things, so that you can talk about it.
And full disclosure, Barry and I were. There is the.
So that, that's what we wanted to make sure. Yeah. See, you can, you can have ideas, but there's repercussions. And, and we wanted to.
We're not talking about after period at all. We wanted to see like.
Absolutely, absolutely. They work. Here, I, I talked with Barry last, that's why.
So from, from a sustainability point of view, that's my job. My job. And so I don't, I don't mind having. But just know there are other things that go into.
Well, we'd like both of you to.
And that's why I ask if there are other options available that you guys.
G R U has a, you, you talk about this, and this is, coming from a utility background, I, I understand what you're saying. Your options are options that you can go out and buy. You, you don't define options as something that. In, in development.
Well, except in that presentation you did about natural gas, where you talked about the natural gas, the hydrogen, the, and the others. Those, well. In development, but not options. And the same thing about solar. Like, if you're not gonna consider it about solar, then it shouldn't be considered that.
Right. When you look at these climate horizons, there's a whole lot that's. There's a whole lot in the. If most of her ready for prime timing. And I go out in. And I go out in.
Right.
So when you talk about those options, renewable natural gas. Have been doing feasibility. Work. Do. This is a feasibility. It doesn't mean that I can now be here and stick that in my IRP. So those options are there that. Not something I can.
Well, for example, in your, in your talk in November, and, and, you know, I agree, and I hear what you're saying, and I think we need both. I think we need the renewable. Answers and everything else, not either of them. I think it's a both and. We need mini grids, and grids that go both ways. I think. All. But, like, when you did the talk in November, you were talking about batteries and now they can only go two to four hours, and you can't power the city during prime time. And that was one of the things I talked to Barry about, and he's like, oh, no, there are many cities. And that was one of the things I talked to Barry about and he's like, oh, no, there are many cities, there's battery capacity right now and there are cities that are. I just want to hear you both in the same booth.
Yeah. I will I will do that. I will do that and it will be non adversarial, just. Just available at one service. There are many.
Well, I'd also like to hear your for achieving that zero in D.
That comes from the IRP. That's what I think. So the primary base of that IRP is just that. Probably. Aftering all the costs, aftering all the options, that's where it's going. Can't give you a thing because the last time we did it, everything has changed.
Or no.
So that that's the option and and what I have to do, what I can.
I I want to put on my theater hat and conflict resolution, not resolution. So there are a couple of things I'm saying to remind myself. So in the national resources, we do. Right, here, top on the issues and bottom on the hard on the issues. We can. Uh Eric first and Barry, that's knowledge and um. We we all want to. Issues and understanding that, yeah, there there, everything's changed, the context constantly changes, knowledge is constantly. On either or, we know there's no.
Over.
This is hard, it's hard that we're trying to do together and so, you know, just like that trust is the center of that. So important and I think that's what the community folks always think about is. Then if we're not out there attacking people or saying you're right or wrong, we know these. I I think and even using words strategy. No, like we don't know, but that's what we need to achieve, but let's come together to try to identify some of the best strategies that you know need our share. So I mean, I I think.
And I I'm glad you made that point and that is some for the reason why I'm here. That's why I'm here because there is no one has it figured out. No. Nope. Is that it? We're. No one has it figured out. And there is no magic bullet out there. For all of our problems. We have to talk about all the options that we. Looking at all the options and we gotta we gotta bring some to the table, right? But we also have to recognize that, and I'm speaking from my personal, so I'm not representing G R U, right? I'm speaking from my personal. Twenty years in the industry, this industry has changed more than a decade. And everyone is figuring that out. The issue that I have is that personal opinion, there are a lot of people that read a lot of news articles that say, why can't we do that? I can tell you why we can't. But they don't want it here. Just personally, okay? They don't want to hear the part that we can't do that because they they read an article that says you can't. So that is the struggle. That's the struggle that we have to sit down and sit tables like this. Of that.
Eric, it's very important. Now. Just because it works one thing doesn't drive the. I I always talk. Eric, what is here, what we're about here. I I I talk about it in terms of what measures fit and which measures. One of the big measures that helps our demand side management. Was the fact that we had a time of use for it and that time of use for it was based on customer base. We had a big industry, so we keep and and it wasn't residentially driven, it wasn't commercial, it was industrial. But we could do certain measures off the fact of like. Outdoors, we could we could give money for people to turn off their air conditioning. They can't do that because they don't have the infrastructure. So that means a lot. So I always talk about what what measures are, what reliability measures or re-measures we can do based on. Running out.
And right, we we don't have a lot of industry anything. Most of our love is residentially driven. That's some commercial impact, mostly residential. They're not going to offer that, we can't. We're in demand side things. It doesn't work.
No demand.
Exactly, exactly. So we have to work where we're going to because with A M I, we're talking about now. With E V's coming, we're talking about. What does that look like and what is the impact?
Understanding those constraints and having more of us. Really, they really are, doesn't mean you say, oh, well, rates are never going to change, but you can't. That's. On an annual basis.
So I think it's. Yeah, I think we're all in agreement. I mean, it would be totally meeting or in the beginning of the meeting, you said something about how we were charged to use old ideas to push new things forward. So that's what I think we're talking about is like, let's look at all the options and let's see them.
If there's.
Of course, of course.
Customer base is not going to change. We're not going to get some big. But so we we can look at options based on certain.
Reality.
All right. All right. Okay, so Eric, you will you get that that person, you're going to send something out. What uh a person.
Oh, remember it's any.
Yeah, a letter will come from the general manager, probably the next month or so, maybe four to six weeks. On the nail that day. Plus would be. You'll get one. That's it. But just trying to pull different perspectives. Hopefully, different priorities, each demographic, it's been ruined by what do you want?
All right, thank you very much and we're we're glad that you're here. So that's the island for our next regular meeting. Is there any other, any questions before we go on? I want to question again.
Well, just in a minute.
So, yeah, the question in a minute that refers to you and Eric coming back. That time that we took.
Towards.
That's our next. The next meeting. Probably check with Barry as well. The other thing I, it's not on here, but our fellow board directors asked this committee to review um the county's landfill diversion options. So we're looking to try to divert away streams from the landfill and try to, you know, have more recycling. And so we want to do that to avoid like the greedy effect to see that. We could probably do both of those on the same day. Um, I don't think it's that long. We can probably do it on February fourth or February twenty, but that would definitely make for a full meeting. So I would envision those two presentations would not, you know, we wouldn't be having other major items. So, you know, the civic, the cases, we still.
I I.
So you probably weren't ready for February anyway. I'm going to workshop. And then B, I think. That's down. They're not probably ready for later. Think the two presentations would fit still up. Have to spend uh well, probably not on, maybe I didn't do all. Contact and all that, that would be.
One, so then the twentieth, February is not support.
No, I would go ahead and. Yeah, the civic major move it to March. If that's. Sorry, Jackie, I kind of jumped in when you were looking for your notes on that, but.
No, we're saying the same thing.
Thanks, though. Be a better.
Yeah, that that would be.
We got three items. All right. Any other discussion on seven before we move on? All right, we're at eight. Um, we've got the maximum.
Yes, quite a bit here. Steve was starting to be unsure. Abilities. Possession. The added. Tease. That it can be a different. I've from. Have Danny saying that you develop a community engagement data sheet. That we can document the relationship we have with other organizations. Also agreed looking to building a website. For that. Data sheet, data sheet was integrated to the COGO for similar Google. Platforms. Have Adam not on the phone anymore. Hit how he's three months old. Be reduced. Got John, the team. The Jones has been vulnerability analysis, it says several different components. We free to take them on as they come, but I guess. Edison to that, the economic section. And then he will discuss more about that. Jackie is going to be being safer, being made aware of what progress is made on. Have agreed to giving all of the information about climate change. Well, luckily, you need your question. At least I have.
How they're doing.
Even uh. Yes, for that, in air, with fire, they can continue. That and then taking. Vulnerability analysis, seeing if there was something missing. Those identify priorities and ability analysis. Um, Steven, you said that you were going to look into legality of the website. Uh, the team needs mayor in a fill um. Jackie said that you were going to help keep this updated on. Do A B have utility advisory board? Um, okay, so Jensen was going to share the Ann Harper climate plan. She shared about three years ago. Jackie said that you set out the efficient reduction act handbook. Steven. Steven, you're going to create a letter contacting organizations that we have a shared. Thinking point. Um, Steven, you're also going to share up the organization that you divvy up of local organizations involved in climate change. And some of these that um. We're also going to, Steven, you're also going to spread. Points that. You're going to deploy the link, probably. Share that point. Meeting, the terming. Seven. John, you're now slated to give a look at at that meeting for action meeting. Or. So. Jackie said that she was going to reach out to the city of Gainesville about. Jensen. About the. Cloud.
One, ten.
Jackie said that Steven and John were invited to present vulnerability study at the. Meeting. Eric's pointing to or or G R U has been on the letter inviting somebody from the city, their own need for the I R P. Then. Steven, you're going to reach out to Barry about speaking. Holding this dialogue with Eric. Third, twenty, twentieth. Oh, Dennis and you were going to contact Hazel about the civic engagement presentation sometime either in March. And then everybody, everybody should be prepared to hear their.
Thank you. Very good. Yeah, thank you, Jane. Okay. We're at uh. Went to public.
I'm here. Honey. Say I'm here and I know it's really great. Is the, I'm I'm here for the legal. I'm here representing our. And are we on your list of groups?
You're on my list.
That was the right answer. Um, so I wanted to know that. I also wanted to comment that I know weatherization and different ways of um stratifying cost are part of conservation. But it's just so important that conservation and learning that energy is a game. It it it's a resource to be valued, like it's just so much a part of what we have to do. I mean, if we could, we could ingrain that in people, when you go to our hospital and that and what have you, then we wouldn't have to have so many different focuses creating energy in first place. Third way, um. The League Women Voters of the state has endorsed a campaign for a constitutional amendment. With sixty four ballots that would give the fundamental rights for against the water. And who would guess that we would need clean water? It just seems like such a something to announce, doesn't it? But at any rate, we are working our tiny block to um get enough to fish dry. So since you have nothing better to do, I'm going to give you my handy hand starter pack. This will um explain it to you and um and um. And I, I want you, first of all, I want you to be aware that this is a statewide initiative. Our initial target is end of February, three dozen signatures. And secondly, you know, if you have a way of participating in. This is like, this is like sustainable energy. This is so fundamentally important to the health of this state. That we stop polluting our waters, that we stop over drying our waters, and that we make our state accountable for allowing these things to happen. And the reason it's a constitutional amendment, and it's actually a nationwide effort to make green amendments, is because. Oftentimes, there are special interests in the room when our laws are written. And the laws are written to make it legal to pollute our waters as long as you check the boxes and get the proper permit. This would supersede that. It would be at the fundamental right level. You have a fundamental right to free speech. You have a fundamental right to religion. Doesn't it make sense that you would also have a fundamental right to have water that is not toxic? And that is not something goes up in our wildlife, not being overdrawn to the point. For ten years from now, we're going to be like. I grew up in San Diego. I've been personally watching them kick the cannon down the road for sixty years. And it doesn't work. So that's why I have really put my heart and soul behind this.
Excellent. Thank you. And I've been working with you over the years and I know your dedication to this and other issues. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Are there other? Public comments?
No one else. Public here.
All right. Well, if no one else on the committee has any other comments. We're going to call the meeting adjourned.